Hey everybody, welcome to the Peterborough Select Board meeting for December 1st, 2020. I'm Tyler Ward, I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. Along with me are fellow Select Board members Bill Taylor and Ed Youngst. We have in the room, but not in the room, Town Administrator Rodney Bartlett. We also have soon to be Town Administrator Nicole McStay. Tonight we'll hear from Dory Drachman, she's with us. We have Tim Brezovic on hand for all our technical issues. Ally Kreutz will be taking minutes, no doubt. If you're seeing us, you're seeing us on Facebook, Comcast Channel 22, Ustream, which you found via the website on the town's homepage, and YouTube. Pretty soon, I think maybe we'll just start saying, naming the places you can't see us, like on the Mars Rover or something, but there you have it. This evening, we'll start off Peterborough Energy Action is a topic to discuss the proposed town meeting resolution regarding 100% renewable energy, that's why Dory's here. We'll discuss a request for no parking signs on East Mountain Road. And we'll most likely appoint Tori Haring-Smith, Tony, is that Tori?
Tori, it's Tori.
Okay, the genesis is Tony, yes.
It was a typo in the agenda.
Tori Haring-Smith to the, as an alternate to the trustee of the trust funds. And we'll hear a little bit more about the Evans Flats' proposed housing situation. Anything else to add? Alright. So just hand the floor over to Dory for presentation.
Great, thank you Tyler.
Welcome.
I am gonna share my screen. And let me know if you can see it. Okay. So can everybody see this slide?
Yes.
Yes, excellent.
Yeah, yes, I can.
Great. Okay, so, my name is Dory Drachman, as Tyler said, and I am working with a group called Peterborough Energy Action. And we are here tonight to lay out why we think that, why and how we think Peterborough is ready for 100%. We are Peterborough Energy Action, which is a local grassroots organization. And we are committed to helping the town make a commitment to transitioning to 100% renewable energy. We are associated with a national campaign called Ready for 100 that is part of the Sierra Club, and so we are definitely part of a network of folks working on this. What are we seeking to do? We want to pass a warrant article this spring that will commit Peterborough to work toward 100% transitioning to 100% clean energy for all of our residents and businesses. Specifically, we are going to set goals for clean electricity by 2030, and clean heat and transportation by 2050. And to help us reach those goals, we are asking to create an energy plan by the end of 2022 that will help us down the path to get to those goals. The energy plan is an important part of how this works. And it is also something that others have done, and so we don't need to be reinventing the wheel for that. Are we gonna be alone in this? The answer is absolutely not. Right now, one in four Americans lives in a location that is already committed to this goal. So a quarter of the population has this goal. And it is, we will be joining 165 towns, cities, and states who have this commitment. Out of those 165 municipalities, five of them are already in New Hampshire. So we've got Hanover, Plainfield, and Cornish conquered, and most recently Keene passed a 100% renewable resolution. And we are working with all of them. And in particular, we are working closely with Keene. We have, we know a lot of the same folks, and they have been very helpful so far in giving us any of their resources. So I expect that that will continue as we move forward. We are just at the beginning of this. And, but we are really committed to doing it now. And why, why do we need to do it now? And it's because scientists agree that climate change is real, and it's human activity that's causing it. They also say that we need to stay under a 1.5% 1.5 degree Celsius rise in temperature in order to avert the most severe impacts of climate change. And in order to do that, we have to reduce our emissions by half by 2030, and they have to be down to zero by 2050. The longer we wait, the more damage will be done, and the more expensive it will be to adapt. So there's, there's just no time to lose. Oops, let me go back there. Um. What I'm gonna go through next is just how some of these, how climate change is going to be impacting the area and, and New Hampshire in general. The, the quick and dirty is that the climate of New Hampshire is becoming much more and will increasingly become more like the climate of North Carolina. And this is within the next decade or two, that that is expected. Specifically, it's getting hotter and humid, more humid. Right now, we have somewhere between six and 10 days each year where the heat index is above 90 degrees, that's a combination of heat and humidity. So it's between six and 10 days right now. That is expected to grow in the next couple of decades to 30 to 60 days a year. So that's one to two months of the year above 90 degrees heat index. And we are also expected to have between 10 and 20 days a year of a heat index above 100 degrees. So it is significantly, it is getting significantly warmer. We are also going to be getting more rain and have been getting more rain. But these rain events are going to be more in extreme storms and hurricanes. And so there will also be more flooding that comes with this increased rain. Ironically, in addition to more rain and flooding, we're also going to be having more drought conditions because in between these intense events will be much drier conditions. And so we will also be experiencing more drought like we had the summer. With drought comes increased risk of wildfires like we've seen out west. Historically wildfires have been a part of New Hampshire's ecology, but it could get, it could increase significantly if the drought conditions increase as well. And then finally, we are going to be, as we have already seen, getting warmer winters with less snow. This all will have an impact on our economy. And so the main, the main sectors that will be impacted by the, by global warming are tourism and agriculture, which are both big in, both important sectors in Peterborough. So we're going to have shorter ski seasons, and we will be seeing resorts close because we're just not gonna have enough snow. We're gonna have more drab foliage because we no longer will have the conditions or the trees that make for these really beautiful vibrant colors. Specifically, we will soon, in the next few decades, be losing the sugar maple. And so that also impacts maple sugaring. It is declining now because sugar maples are stressed and producing less sugar in their sap. So it takes a lot more sap to produce a gallon of, of maple syrup. And those will continue to decline until we no longer will have a maple sugar industry. And then finally, you would think that with a longer growing season, or you would think that because of warming weather, we would have a longer growing season, and we do. But because the longer growing season will be punctuated by flooding and drought, we will have lower crop yields. So while we'll have a longer growing season, we will not have as many, not have as much produce or, or goods to sell or eat. How is it gonna impact our health, both our health and the health of wildlife? Well, we are going to see some die-offs of wildlife. We already are with moose. They have taken a huge hit in population. They have, their population has plummeted by about 90% in the last decade. And that's mainly because, excuse me, ticks are surviving the winters now. It's not been cold enough for ticks to die off. And so you can see in that inset, what, that is actually a section of fur on a moose. And you can see all of the ticks that are just choker block in there. And so the moose are actually dying by, you know, thousands of tick bites. And it's, we're unlikely to see a rebound in moose. There will be other animals that also will be dying off, or at least changing their, their residence. They will be leaving New Hampshire and in search of more compatible climates like Ermin and Snishu hair. Ticks, as we know, don't only impact moose, they also impact humans. And so we are seeing an increase in Lyme disease, and that will continue. And also we're seeing an increase in other tick-borne diseases that we haven't seen. In addition to disease vectors, climate change is also going to be impacting our health primarily through heat-related illness, things like heat, heat stress, heat exhaustion, heat stroke. These are actually some of the most dangerous impacts of climate change on the human body. We are not meant to be able to thrive in such hot weather with such high humidity rates. We just can't, we can't then sweat to, to lower our core temperature. So that is a, a big threat for, for our health. So this is a really big deal, and these are really dire situations. And, and at the same time, our actions really matter. In fact, they matter more now than they probably have. We can still avoid the most severe outcomes. But we need to act now. We don't have any more time. As I said previously, scientists are saying we need to have our emission rates by 2030. So that's in 10 years. We also can't be relying on individual action to do this. It, to do it at the scale necessary to reduce our emissions by 50%, we can't do it individually, we have to be doing it collectively. And so we need to be acting as a community to cut these carbon emissions. Peterborough is a prime place to be pursuing this because as everybody in this virtual room knows, Peterborough has been a leader in municipal carbon reduction for decades. While the solar array is kind of our poster child and is the most photogenic of the things that the town has done, there are numerous others. And this is just a partial list of the accomplishments that the town has had in reducing our carbon emissions. Things like the green purchasing policy and the no idling policy. We have wood pellet boilers in most of our municipal buildings. We have just completed an LED streetlight conversion. And we have, with the help of the voters and the Select Board, come out a couple of times in favor of action for reducing our, our carbon footprint. I want to draw special, I wanna highlight one of these bullet points in particular, and that is the Menadnock Buying Collaborative. And I wanted to highlight it for a number of reasons. So first of all, for those of you who don't know what it is, it is something that actually Rodney started, I don't remember the year, but started way back in the day. And it was, you know, a very innovative idea of collaborating with other municipalities and school systems to collectively buy on the wholesale market to buy electricity and using the collective load as an opportunity to, to do some bulk purchasing and therefore get some reduction in the price of our electricity. But importantly, it also allowed them to, allows them, because it's still going on and thriving, it allows them to choose where we get our electricity from and the source of that electricity. And so for a number of years now, through the buying collaborative, we have gotten most of our municipal electricity from renewable energy. And we are, and there's, there's no end of that sentence. But it's a really huge accomplishment. What that is leading toward is actually a broadening of that concept. There is a new law that is called Community Power that basically allows for this type of setup that we are very familiar with and comfortable with to be done on a full town level that allows for the town to purchase collectively the electricity for all of its residents and all of its businesses. And so it is now able to be realized on a much broader level. The Peterborough Energy Committee, not to be confused with Peterborough Energy Action, will be asking to present on Community Power in the coming months because we see it as such an important tool, a real game changer actually, in, in the effort to reduce our emissions. The other reason why it is so important is that for the first time, in, at least in the state of New Hampshire, it really allows folks who can't afford solar panels to be able to have 100% renewable electricity. It doesn't, you don't need to have a, you know, a very high income. It is, it is open to people of all incomes. And so because Peterborough Energy Action is really committed to having this be a just, and a just transition to 100% renewable, we don't want to be leaving anybody behind. This part of Community Power is a really important tool for us as we pursue this. So given this incredible history over the last decade of Peterborough's energy-reducing actions, what is the next logical step for us? What's the next right step for us? Well, we believe that it's 100% renewable energy. We really do believe that Peterborough is ready for 100%. And we are really looking forward to talking with you more. We want to hear from you. We have started to reach out to some of the Select Board members and staff to talk about your ideas, your suggestions, your concerns about, about this resolution. And we will continue to reach out to others as we move forward in this public part of our campaign. We also want to hear from residents, as many residents as possible. And in order to do that, we are going to be setting up a series of community dialogues. And our first one will be at the end of January on the 28th. And, but we will definitely have more dates to, to sign up for. You can go to our website, peterboroughenergyaction.org, and find out more about the campaign and to register for community dialogues. And so we really look forward to partnering with as many folks in the town to help make this happen. And I just wanna leave you with one, a quote that that really has summarized why I am doing this and why so many of us are doing this. And that is, what will today's kids say about us if we give up now when we still have the opportunity to act? Because while we will be experiencing these impacts, it's them that will be feeling it the worst. And, and we owe it to them to do this. So thank you for, for, for listening, and I am happy to take any questions. If there is time for that in the meeting.
Great, thank you, Dory, that was a great presentation, full of important information and exciting to hear the work that's been done so far. Anybody have any questions for Dory? Anyone?
I had some early on, but she started to answer them toward the end, so the only, I don't have a question, but I, I would really give a big personal thanks story to doing such a service as this. And I hope that in the education part, that this presentation, as difficult as it may be to hear, is an important message that as many people, not only here, but all over, need to need to see so that we don't continue to get into these groups of people that are deniers of climate change. So thank you so much for this, it was a great community service, I think, to present this to us the way you did.
Dory, if you could just take your screen off of, or stop sharing your screen, that would put us back into the, there you go, great. Thank you. Anyone else? No, no questions? Yeah, great start. I know, I did sit down with Dory a while back and was excited to hear that you had a group together, or, you know, you guys were gonna charge ahead and and do some, some, some research and see where this could go. And that is the way to go at town meetings, see what the voters say. And I think you have enough time to educate people or, you know, get the word out that this could be really beneficial for, for people. I do personally choose the option to, whether I actually get all, all renewable or wind energy on my, my ever-source bill, but I'm paying for that aspect or the credits or that sort of thing. And if I'm not actually getting the actual wind, at least I'm making that statement that that's what I want my energy to come from. So hopefully we'll get there someday.
Oh, thank you for giving me this opportunity and just your comments, Tyler and Ed's, are exactly why we, we feel that Peterborough is really ready for this. Because the leadership in the town has, you know, has shown that, that you are embracing this. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you more.
Great. Yeah, thanks, Dory. And kind of related, we do have the, you know, at last town meeting, voters approved the charging stations down at the renewable, for electric vehicles down at the new parking lot. And we had an inquiry about that this week. It's in our consent agenda letter from Bill Kennedy. Nicole, you wanna just give us a quick update on where we are with that?
Sure. I can do it, or Rodney can, but, yep.
Well, I believe we're actually meeting with the Energy Committee next Wednesday, the 9th, to talk about that. Seth will be joining me. And to get a better understanding of what we can and can't do, and how to go forward with, with next steps. But also plays into that is that as part of the library project, we've authorized the underground conduits to connect their mechanical room to potential charging stations. So it's a discussion that may get a little larger than original, originally envisioned. But that's our next step on the 9th, and then we'll be back to the board on their next meeting, which I believe is the 15th.
Great. Well, it all sounds good. Keeping up with the future, hopefully. Next up, too many people are enjoying the outdoors.
That is true, Mr. Chairman. We did receive a call from Richard Pendleton, who's now, I believe, with the Menadnock Conservancy about the amount of parking along East Mountain Road in the area of the Raymond Trail. And as you think back to last spring and through most of the summer, whether it was Pac-Man, Menadnock Temple, Menadnock itself, the White Mountains, they were heavily used by people going outside and, and with the restrictions of the pandemic, trying to stay away from indoor activities. So in response to Richard Pendleton's request to take a look at the site and how we could better manage the on-street parking along East Mountain Road in the area of Raymond Trail, Chief Gannar joined us. We looked at the site, and we think it does warrant, you know, the installation of no parking signs on the west side of East Mountain Road in the area of 565. And I think that will help us get a better handle on the safety in that area. And as some of you may know, there's also a, an additional parking area just to the north of the Raymond Trail that is also available, and we'll be installing some signage to direct people to the additional parking space. But to get to that, we need to go through a public hearing process. And if the board wishes to consider this request for no parking along East Mountain Road, we'll schedule the no parking public hearing for the 15th, Nicole?
Correct.
And that would allow us plenty of time to evaluate that. And if, and if it is approved, then we'll make arrangements for installing a no parking signs at the end of winter, start of spring.
Okay, sounds like the fair next step to hear public input, yeah.
Okay, so we'll schedule a public hearing for the 15th.
Bill, Ed, any objection to discussing no parking?
No, it sounds great to me.
Okay. And then, and in the meantime, if you don't wanna park up there, you can park downtown in the downtown parking lot. And you can walk all the way up to the top of Pac-Man, Menadnock via Pine Street, then Cheney Ave, then you cut across the meadow, and you go up the Cranberry Meadow Trail, and you'll, you'll see Cunningham Pond on your way. And then you continue up through the woods. You'll hit that Raymond Trail if you're lucky, if you're right, if you find it. And then you'll get your way up there. Anyway, it is a lovely half a day trip, so get outside. Alright, next up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rodney. I think I'm just gonna go ahead and make, I will, I'll make a motion to appoint Tori Haring-Smith as an alternate to the trustee of the trust funds.
Second.
Any further discussion? Andrew Mans gave a stellar recommendation, and we, I think we've all run into Tori. And we, I think we've all run into Tori in our businesses in town and meetings, that sort of thing, and be a great addition to the to that committee. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, another another great volunteer to add to the roster. Next up, Evans Flats.
So we have done a bit of research on Evans Flats. First thing we took a look at was the deeds that we have on the property. And contrary to some of the rumors that we've heard, we could not find any deed restrictions that would prevent any use uh on the property whatsoever. There were some restrictions that were attached to the National Guard Armory, but all even those have expired at this point. So um it is, it is property that is free and clear for the town's use. However, the town chooses to use it. So the next thing that we looked at was the property itself. And so here you can see um the Evans Flat property. And you'll find that this map, these maps are in your packet. This is the entire parcel. Um I don't know if you can see my cursor at all.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we do have the area where the armory is here um in the which would be in the southeastern portion of the property. A little bit to the west of that, the highway garage and also the location, you know, these are the locations where you're gonna find the fire station um and the other municipal services. Then we have um in the area that you don't see shaded, this area of the lot is all wetlands. And then a bit to the north of that is the upland property that we're talking about. This is Evans Road that runs down here off of Elm Street. Um and this is the piece of land that's under consideration. Moving to the second map as zooms in on that that piece of land, um the northern part of that property. This is a wetlands delineation that was done in two thousand and six. Here you can see this yellow box. This denotes the portion of the property that is in the family district. The rest of the property um is in the rural district or in the commercial district as you move further south towards where the the town's property is. It's about three point three acres of upland. Um we would have to have this wetlands delineation redone as it has been over ten years um to make sure that we still have an accurate measurement. But this is approximately where the buildable area is. This does not include setbacks. This does not include any kind of wetlands buffer or anything like that. This is just, you know, essentially what in two thousand and six was not considered wetlands. So this theoretically would be the portion of the property that you would be looking to subdivide off. Um and I would expect that the town would probably want to make this a more regular shape um instead of have a the back property line match the the other property lines on Evans Road there. And we also looked at the zoning. Um as I said, it is in the family district. And if you go to the town's website, under code and ordinances um in that left-hand menu, you'll find the town zoning ordinance. And if you click into that, section two forty-five dash six, um which is page seventeen of the zoning ordinance is shows the family district. And given the uses that are being considered, um I also included the workforce housing portion of the ordinance which is found on page ninety-seven, that's section two forty-five dash twenty-four six. And i- again, it would very much depend on the use that the town wishes to put it to that the purchasers would want to put it to. Really in the selectmen's court at this point. So the next step is for the selectmen to decide what, if anything, they would like to do with this property. And then we determine what steps the town that we as staff would need to take to effectuate that.
Okay. Who wants to go first?
I have a question.
Sure.
At the last meeting when we talked about this, um one of the things that that I think I commented about, it sounded like a potential concern was the fact that the town um Public Works Department is already using that for um you know, storage of snow or where they dump snow or something like that. So is that? I mean, you know, I think before we decide about that, we have to know how much of a problem that is or isn't to the town. So that's, I guess that's the question.
If if I could answer that. Obviously, in in um any winter, the initial location for the snow dump is at the DPW yard on Elm Street. Only when that amount of snow begins to create an issue of of getting around in the DPW yard do we go over to Evans Road and use that as as snow storage. That site could be replaced uh up at the wastewater treatment facility. Yes, a little further away. Would take a little more time uh for cleanup in the downtown and maybe a couple more trucks, but at least that option would be there. Um and that's a site where we could control uh the snow and it's whatever comes with it and its runoff so that it doesn't simply directly go to any one of our streams, brooks or rivers. So there is an option for that. We have used it for material storage, particularly during the reconstruction of Union Street. And at this juncture, Union Street is fully rebuilt from, obviously from Main Street and Elm Street all the way out to Route uh one. If the board determines that there is a higher and better use of that property, for whatever that use may be, certainly Public Works, particularly Highway, will be able to accommodate those changes into the future.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Rodney, um if say the initial snow dump were to fill up, you got a even a ballpark idea of a cost of what it would cost us to truck it to the other side of town per storm?
Well, certainly it's it's a further distance. Um and it may add you know, one or two trucks to the cleanup. It could be roughly uh two trucks, eighty dollars an hour, a hundred and sixty dollars an hour for the trucks. F for at at uh they had ten-hour period. So it'd be sixteen hundred dollars a storm if you had to truck it all out to the wastewater treatment facility, more or less, obviously.
Okay. Nicole, the, so the deeds do not show any restrictions. Do we have any idea what was the initial intent of the donation of this land? I know it was quite some time ago.
It was generally for town's use. So it didn't really have any, didn't seem to have any particular restrictions on it. It was a piece of land that that was owned a portion that was was carved out for the armory and the remainder of it was given to the town.
And the proposal that prompted this was for six units? Is that what, is that what they were gonna try and get out of that?
I believe so, was a relatively small, small construction, which you could probably get in there if you were to use the workforce housing. Again, it depends on the wetlands delineation, it depends on the setbacks. You would have to use the workforce housing section of the ordinance. And it would still be, it it would be a pretty tight squeeze.
I think it's important for the board to look at this from the standpoint as to whether or not you would want to sell a portion of that property. Not necessarily uh make the determination as to what the use shall be at this point. Because as we did with the G A R hall a number of years ago, we put it out there to see what the responses would be. And then made a determination as to what direction uh the board would or the town would want to go in. The the presentation on the workforce housing is obviously one opportunity. There may be other opportunities out there that we are not aware of. So if the board has interest in exploring uh the potential of of uh reuse of this section of the DPW's uh area lot, um then then we can go, there is a process, RSA forty-one fourteen A allows you to hold uh public hearings, it allows you to request input from the planning board and the conservation commission, a second public hearing, and then the board can can make a determination as to whether or not you want to sell it or do something different. So there is a a formal process to go through. And and it's not necessarily upfront to determine what the end use would be until you've gone through that process.
Right, and that's fair. You know, in thinking about the proposal, there were a lot of unknowns, who, you know, how, if we did sell it, how do you regulate it so that it it if it's resold, it's not sold, so it's unaffordable anymore and that sort of thing, and it's kind of out of our hands? Then uh we didn't want to get into a lease that seemed too cumbersome. We, we, you know, maybe we see the cost benefit analysis if we're talking about offering uh community buying power on on renewable energies. Could could, what could go in there that could offset people's energy? What could we do as a town to have a microgrid potential? Is that something that could go in that parcel? I'm not sure. I I'm not sure where I stand. I'm uh as far as selling it goes, I don't, I don't think I would have a decision right now.
Yeah, I have another um another, just being a devil's advocate a minute. I mean, that area up there surrounding that is where we've we still got some projects to happen up there, including um the fire station, you know, that that study. While these studies of that particular area are going on, it would seem to me that the timing to be considering selling that might be not appropriate. I mean, we may find some surprises when we start getting deeper into the engineering and all of that stuff. We may, I don't know. I mean, I'm just thinking something else could come up where we might need municipal land in that area. So you know, that's just a thought.
I had a similar thought to that. Um maybe we might need additional access to the DPW lot that could potentially go through there, you know, if we're adding police and fire to the same
Yeah.
property. And then another thought is is there is uh going back to what you said, Tyler. It's about perfect southern exposure there. If you were to add a solar array, you could fit a whole bunch of them there. I mean, like, perfect southern exposure, I think.
Right, and then we have the pedestrian bridge across the street from me here that's gonna need a use at some point. We could put it right over those wetlands and get to and from.
Yeah, people can go get sand.
Right. So yeah, yeah, there are too many variables here, I think, to consider, consider selling it right at, right at this moment. I don't, I, you know, I hate, I I think that was a great idea. I think it was in a good direction to go. And certainly we need to do something about places for people to live, you know. So but good points, I, you know, great point, Ed.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I thought that the proposal was was good. I know the three years I was on the planning board, um you know, as the layus on, there there was a lot of talk about affordable housing and even before that, I'm sure. And it's been a hot topic um that people seem to want to to be able to do. And and the growth of some of the businesses um in the area um seem to want it to happen. But between the um the point I already made and, you know, just lots of uncertainty about econ- economics and all of that. I just don't think it's a good time right now to be thinking about uh selling it. These other ideas might be much better. Better use for that. Um I don't think we should be rushed into any any decision to sell it at this, at this point in time.
Is that where we are? And it, do we have to have a vote on whether or not to sell it or just an informal, we're we're not ready to sell it?
If you're not ready to sell it, I think an informal, this acknowledgement of that is fine.
Sure, and and this leaves it open for for later discussion.
Right.
Sure. And and possibly looking around other parts of town where where affordable housing might fit or, you know. It's such a tough word, affordable housing, you know. Yeah. But we'll talk about it some more, no doubt.
I think we have that consensus that this isn't the time, is it, right?
Yeah. Bill, do you agree?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any other business? We had a great update in our weekly dispatch that went out today. And uh we have that holiday hometown holidays event coming up safely prepared and set up for us, so hopefully people will participate in that. And it's Giving Tuesday, so if you have a favorite nonprofit today and a couple extra coins, look them over. We're all in this together. Okay, everyone, I guess that's it. See on the fifteenth, if not around town, with a mask on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was that Claire that said, not me?
Claire said she won't be around town. We will have masks on, though I can assure you, that mask pledge we're keeping in Florida, we've already told people that when they come to our house, um they have to have a mask on, period.
Right.
Personal, but um that's what it is.
Yeah.
Ed, before we adjourn, can you just finish up the laundry before you?
Yeah, I know. I I don't have a private office, a room separate from the house down here. So, yeah, that's, this is, this, this going the other way from the thing is the is the kitchen area and the dining area. So it's kind of a, you know, a so back here, this little spot, uh I had room to uh create a little desk here for me to use for the computer and stuff or for both of us to use, actually. And um but, you know, the background is the is the is the washer dryer, for sure.
All right, good night, everyone. Thanks. Motion to adjourn. So moved.
Yeah, so moved.
All right, all in favor. Good night.
Good night.
Hey, everyone, thank you.